Regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of the planning commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is composed of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle, Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other device that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. Roll, Mr.?
I'll do the roll call of votes tonight. Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crent?
Here.
Mr. Sanzika?
Here.
Mr. Shepke?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Sorry, couldn't hear you. Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Everyone is present and accounted for.
Thank you. For anyone in the audience, there is a border review meeting going on tonight. It's down the hall, so this is the planning commission, but the border review is on down. Next, item number two is the approval of the agenda.
So moved as prepared.
Second.
Mr. Tagle, and seconded by Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Here, yes, I'm sorry. Next is the approval of the minutes of the February 11th, 2014 regular meeting.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schultz.
I've moved to approve them as prepared.
Is there a second? Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Item four is the public comments. This is for items not on the current agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to an item that is not on the current agenda? Not, we'll move on to item five. This is a preliminary site plan review. Preliminary site condominium plan review. Proposed Berkshire Park, 11 units or lots, south side of Big Beaver, east of Adams, between Brook Lawn and Renwood, at 3737 West Big Beaver. Section 30, currently zoned R1C, one-family residential district. Is that you, Mr. Carlisle?
Yes. Good evening to the planning commission. Before I start my presentation, I want to note that the applicant has changed the name of the project from Berkshire Park to Papleton Ridge or Popleton Ridge. So I might use the terms interchangeably by accident, but it is the same development I'm speaking of. As the chairman alluded to, the applicant is requesting approval of a single-family detached condominium site plan for 11 units. It's located at the southeast corner of Big Beaver and Brook Lawn. The five-acre site is currently adjacent to single-family residential on all four sides, including across Big Beaver. A very similar site condominium project, pretty much actually is the same site plan as was submitted, was approved previously by the planning commission. However, that site plan has since expired. The applicant's bringing forth a very similar project for the planning commission to approve tonight. The conventional layout is 11 units. These will be served by a new cul-de-sac drive, which will be located off Brooklyn Road. The applicant has applied the lot averaging requirement of the ordinance, and we do note that Lot 4 is under, is too narrow for the 76.5 minimum lot width requirement. However, there is room within Lot 5, as well as the adjacent stormwater retention facility where the applicant can shift around lot lines, so we think they can be able to meet that lot width requirement for Lot 4. In addition, there were some questions in regards to southern property owners in regards to screening and berming. There is an existing berm with landscaping. The applicant is proposing to maintain that berm for an appropriate transition to the southern properties. The applicant was asked to provide floor plans and elevations for this meeting. They have done that. That is included in your packet. I will note that we did make that exception in the staff report, and they did comply with that requirement as we requested. Our issues are minimal in regards to the development. The first issue is in regards to the new cul-de-sac drive. The applicant has shown a width of 24 feet. The city requirement is 28 feet. However, there is sufficient area within the proposed right-of-way to increase that by four feet to accommodate the 28 feet, and the applicant should be able to do that. In regards to stormwater, the stormwater detention basin has been reviewed by the city engineer. The only comments in regards to that is that they are going to be required to pave the access drive. Currently, they're proposing gravel. They're going to have to pave it if it's going to be maintained by the city. As always, we do encourage the applicant to consider alternative stormwater management practices, and so we encourage the applicant to consider that moving forward. The applicant has submitted a landscape plan. The landscape plan does comply with all ordinance requirements. There's two things to note in regards to landscape and landscape maintenance. The applicant has shown a green belt, a 20-foot-wide, non-accessible green belt easement between Big Beaver Road and their development. We do note that this will be have to be maintained by the homeowners association, so we want some sort of acknowledgement that the homeowners association will take responsibility of this green belt. In addition, the development backs up to Big Beaver and the Big Beaver right-of-way. The applicant will be required to maintain the lawn or grass portion of the Big Beaver right-of-way, and so that should also be an acknowledgement within the homeowners association In addition, the applicant is proposing a decorative wall and landscaping along the corner of Brook Lawn and Big Beaver. We do note that there is a 20-foot-five vision clearance. The applicant should apply the vision clearance to the site plan itself to confirm that they don't encroach upon that 25-vision clearance triangle. If they do, there will have to be slight modifications to the proposed landscaping in that area. So in summary, we do support the plan, and we do recommend preliminary site plan approval. I understand there are a number of outstanding issues that we've listed in our report. However, we think those are more minimal and can be easily addressed by the applicant moving forward as part of the final site plan submittal. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Carlisle?
Quick one.
Mr. Crent?
Referring to property three, or location three and four, how are those measurements taken? There's a set of dash lines, and then there are the, looks like separations between the property lines. Just wanted to know where that 76.5 foot is actually measured from?
For the curve in a road and a cul-de-sac parcel, it's measured at the setback line.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. My name is Joseph Crackiolo. I am the developer on this site.
Do you have anything to add in addition to Mr. Carlisle's report?
No, I understand the request that they are making, and we're going to abide by those items that they're requesting, sure.
Any planning commission questions or concerns for the applicant?
Just a comment, if I may. I was out at the site this afternoon. There are three fairly, or a few, I don't know that at 40 miles an hour I got the number just right. There are quite a few, or several, let's put it that way. Mature trees very close to the east property line, and it shows on the landscape plan that the intent is to simply cut them down. I think it's very unfortunate that trees that are 30 or 40 years old would be destroyed unless it is absolutely necessary. They certainly don't appear to be within the building envelope. That's my only comment.
Well, I, obviously, it wouldn't be in the building envelope, and if the tree can be saved, we're definitely going to leave it. We're not going to touch it. Not knowing exactly where it's going to fall into the rear yard drainage, that's hard to say. But if we can save the tree, we're going to save as many of the trees as we can on the lot. I mean, even our previous subdivisions that we've taken trees down, we've replaced far many trees in our subdivisions. Bailey Vineyard is one of the subdivisions we've done. Estates at Cambridge, another subdivision. River Place, so...
Well, we would just hope that you'd take every effort possible to address those trees.
Sure, absolutely.
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
Only reason I made the comment I did is that in the package we received prior to the meeting, and I don't see it in the package here on the computer, there was a tree inventory, and it indicated that all three of those trees were to be removed. So if they have an X through them to be removed, I'm assuming that in sticking with the documentation that was presented, they will in fact be removed, and I think it's unfortunate.
All right. It's unfortunate, but we're replacing them. I think we're doing it in excess of landscaping plan on the site, so...
Any other questions for the developer? Mr. Schultz, or I'm sorry, Mr. Stratt, excuse me.
Where you've indicated the path, gravel path, or the retention area?
Yes.
The possibility that you can use the pavers that allow grass to grow in between, but yet still allow vehicles to drive over?
Well, I'm almost positive that was noted on the landscaping plan, but I guess they want that changed to concrete, so...
Concrete?
The fire department and the engineering department will accept grasscrete if it meets their standards, so if the direction of the planning commission is for some grasscrete or paver material, we can certainly relay that to the departments, and then the applicant can move forward with that.
Sure. Yeah, I do think that fire department would approve it. I've personally used it in several communities for schools.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So you are receptive to doing that, then?
Oh, absolutely. I'm almost positive it was noted in the plan to do it that way, but...
It says here in front of my ground here, it says proposed gravel path or approved vehicle.
Okay, no, well, if that's what the city would request, absolutely, we'll follow those lines.
I would just suggest when we have a resolution that stipulation be added. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is not a public hearing, but we will take any members of the audience who have a comment or concern about this. If not, we'll bring it back to the table for a resolution. Or any other comments?
I'm volunteering.
Somebody can't find the resolution? Oh, okay.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Resolved preliminary site plan, excuse me, preliminary site condominium approval pursuant to Article 8 and Section 10.02 of the zoning ordinance is requested for Berkshire Park, Popleton Park, whatever the official name is, I'm sorry. Site condominium, 11 units or lots on the south side of Big Beaver Road, I believe, east of Adams, between Brook Lawn and Renwood. Section 30, currently zoned R1C, one-family residential district, be granted subject to the following. One, increase Berkshire Court Road width to 28 feet. Two, reconfigure Lot 4 to meet the 76.5 minimum width requirement. C, indicate percentage of lot covered by building. Four, provide building plans and elevations, which indicate floor area per unit. Five, consider more natural stormwater best management practices. Six, indicate maintenance of green belt and Big Beaver right-of-way. Seven, ensure that 25-foot vision clearance triangle is met. And eight, that the retention pond access drive be constructed of a grass paver material. Second?
He actually did provide floor plans and elevations, so we could, if Mr. Schultz agreed, we could strike that condition.
Yeah, they're in tonight's packet, but they weren't in the one that was delivered to us, so if you agree with him.
If those sketches can constitute floor plans, I will retract item four.
Okay. Second?
Second, okay, very good. Mr. Savadat, the vote?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Savadat?
Yes.
Are you confident that you know the square footage of these homes?
Yeah, that was part of the requirement, was it not?
I'm confident that, I'm confident that the homes that Mr. Crackiolo constructs will meet our requirements of our zoning ordinance.
But it's not stipulated.
Okay, but all my point was that we had asked him for sizes of these, and there is no sizes. There's no scale on these drawings or sketches.
Well, I had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Crackiolo, and he indicated that basically all his homes are custom, are custom, so he was unable to give us a floor plan of every home he's going to build, because he doesn't even know what he's going to build yet, so he gave us something that is similar to what he's going to build. We've had this conversation before with the planning commission where this is a requirement that, I think there's some planning commissioners who think that we probably shouldn't even be asking this information, but it is required by our ordinance. Does that answer your question?
Well, kind of, I guess.
Yeah.
Is there a square footage requirement for these buildings?
Yes.
There is a minimum square footage requirement.
I believe it's 1,200 square feet.
Is there a maximum?
No, it's bounded by setbacks, height.
Percent coverage.
So in final site plan, will you see floor plans that fall within those parameters?
No, we will see building footprints, potential building footprints, building envelopes, excuse me. But when they submit building plans, it'll be reviewed internally to ensure that it meets the requirements of zoning ordinance.
Do you feel it necessary to add any language to any of these resolution points?
No.
Okay.
Any further questions or concerns on the motion? Okay, we're ready for the vote, then?
Can I, who seconded? Mr. Crent?
Mr. Crent.
On the vote, Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crent?
Yes.
Okay, now we're ready for item number six. Special use request and preliminary site plan review. This is a public hearing, special use and preliminary site plan review, file number SU412. Proposed Advanced Landscape and Builder Supply Incorporated, north side of Birchwood, east of Bellingham, at 1871 Birchwood, Section 26, currently zoned IB Integrated Industrial and Business District.
Yes, thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The applicant, which is Advanced Landscape and Builder Supply, is requesting a special use and preliminary site plan approval for an outdoor storage and contractor's yard. The, excuse me, the site is located on Birchwood, and it is actually directly adjacent to the United Ventures Contractor's Yard, which the planning commission approved approximately about a year ago. The difference between this site and that site is this site is a little bit larger, as well as has a building. The other site was approved without a building to be located at that site. Similar to United Ventures, the applicant is proposing to use the site for storing of landscape vehicles, material storage, as well as a soil conveyor sorter and soil stockpile. In regards to the application, we do have two outstanding questions that need to be addressed tonight. Well, not tonight, it needs to be addressed to satisfaction of the planning commission. The first is in regards to site operation. The use of the site for landscape vehicle storage and materials bins are typical of what you'd find for an outdoor storage and contractor's yard. However, the soil sorter, the soil conveyor belt, and the soil stockpile, especially in a smaller site such as this, as well as a more urban location such as this, creates some issues and concerns of ours, as well as it's not typical for a contractor's operation of this scale. The site operation questions really need to be addressed to satisfaction of the planning commission, not only to address the standards of the conditional use permit, of special use permit, I'm sorry, but also mitigate impacts on adjacent properties. In regards to the operation questions we have is, the first one is, what is the total height of the soil conveyor sorter, as well as the stockpile? We need to know that to determine if the six-foot-high wooden fence as proposed is adequate for screening. What are the erosion control provisions of the soil stockpile, so that when it rains, the soil will not drain into the storm sewer and storm system, as well as the public right-of-way? What are the dust control provisions when this sorter is in use, as well as the dust provisions sending dust onto the public right-of-way, as well as adjacent properties? What are the normal number of daily trips for vehicles in and out of the site? And also, what are the number of trucks expected to be parked overnight? These are what we find as five really fundamental operation questions that need to be answered so that we can adequately address the standards of the special use permit. The second issue is in regards to the paving of the site. Section 6.08(c) of the zoning ordinance requires that all travel surfaces of a contractor's yard have to be paved. The reasons for this are numerous, starting off with the need to reduce onsite soil erosion, the need to reduce offsite dust from the site. It ensures that mud and soil will not extend and carry over into the public right-of-way, as well as the issue of gravel and rocks getting caught in trucks advance the wear and tear on the public right-of-ways. For that reason, we do require that all travel surfaces within contractor's yards be paved. We discussed this matter with the engineering department, and they also support the requirement for the paving of travel areas. Now, what is deemed as a travel area is up for interpretation, but we deem anywhere that can support a automobile or truck going through the site, so basically excluding the area of the material bins, we consider that travel area, and that we feel it should be paved. If paving is required, and if it's done, the applicant will probably have to provide additional stormwater management on the site. There is adequate area in front of the site. It is a berm, but there's adequate area to put some additional stormwater management in that location. Because of these outstanding issues, we are not able to give a recommendation for approval at this point, but the applicant should address these points in a further submittal to the satisfaction of the planning commission. Thank you.
Mr. Schultz?
In addition to the list of things that you had about the conveyor and sorter, I also have concerns about the noise level that it's going to produce, because there are a number of existing businesses around there that are not outdoor contractor yards that may in fact be disturbed by the noise of a sorter shaking soil to move it around.
Anything else? Mr. Sanzika?
I agree with Mr. Schultz. I worked for contractors that had screens, and they're very noisy. I know they're 15-plus feet tall, and it might be objectionable to the neighbors with all the, not knowing what the hours of operation are, and I don't, I guess, was the applicant, I was just curious, will he be selling retail topsoil, or will it just be for his own use?
My understanding is just for their own use of their own clients, as they take the soil offsite to service their clients at their homes and businesses.
I'd like to ask the applicant then.
Okay.
Mr. Schultz, one additional point, and you mentioned it briefly. This kind of an operation, I have serious concerns about soil and mud being transported onto Birchwood and out onto the major thoroughfares off the wheels of the tires, wheels of the trucks. It can get really, really messy when you're coming out of a mud pit or off a paved area that is used to store dirt, and you're driving a truck through wet dirt that's been rained on. So I'm a little concerned about that also.
Anything else? Mr. Shepke?
Yes, I'm looking at the blueprint here, and everything that says it's going to be gravel is going to be concrete, is that correct? On the print?
No.
I'm a little confused at what's being paved and what isn't being paved here.
The area to the east, that's a little bit darker, a little darker hatching on the drawing, is not to be paved.
Well, some of it isn't. My concern is where it is paved, with these catch basins in here, that any runoff and everything doesn't plug up and get into the storm sewers, that, you know, it's properly, they're properly constructed so that loose soil and debris will not wash out into the main storm sewer, so that's a concern on the catch basin, so we make it like an interceptor on them so that they, we don't get that, any of that loose storage back into our storm system.
Just for clarification, the only area that's being proposed to be paved is the area a little bit darker surrounding the existing building, as well as the additional parking that's proposing. The rest of the site is proposed to remain gravel.
Yeah, because over there on the top of the picture, over in the area, there was, it was saying that truck parking's over there, and it was my understanding that possibly that anything that would have a vehicle on, especially when the frost goes out of the ground, would have to have some kind of support system as far as concrete or something like that.
And that's been our interpretation of what the ordinance requires, is that anything where a vehicle can move on?
Yes.
Has to be paved?
Yes.
And for the reasons that I mentioned earlier.
Those are my concerns.
Any clarification then? Mr. Schultz? The dark gray area is what the petitioner is suggesting to pave?
I misspoke. Go ahead.
Can you follow my hand up here? This area is either currently paved or is proposed to be paved. This area with a different color hatching, and this boundary is going to remain gravel. The actual current operation ends right here. They're extending this as a gravel yard. So the only area that's going to be paved is what I'm outlining right now in my little hand, is this, that area.
So that's all, that's all the city is saying is required to be paved?
No, no, no. The city, our intention is anywhere where a car can travel, so up in here, through here, this whole entire area, if they're going to have automobile traffic, as well as truck and vehicular traffic, it needs to be paved.
Okay, so back to my original statement, the gray area is what the petitioner is suggesting to be paved?
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
One more question. It says, it shows on the print here, parking for three 53-foot semi-trailers with dump trailers, and that's the area I was concerned about, that whole area in there, that's going to be fairly unstable on gravel.
Correct. That's an area where we are, again, recommending, well, our interpretation is that it's required to be paved.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Mr. Hudson?
If we're talking potential of paving, it looks like a majority of this piece of property... property. What provisions made for drainage of water and rain and this sort of thing?
They'll have to meet the engineering standards and requirements, which they haven't, I don't believe they submitted calculations based on paving of the site.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing now, and is the applicant available, please?
Nathan Robinson, Horizon Engineering, representing the applicant. I'll go ahead and go through my list to address some of the concerns that staff has on some of the site issues. First, I want to explain a little bit about the operation. This is probably obvious, but I'm gonna go ahead and mention it. Basically, obviously, one of the key components to this site is the topsoil screening. And it's so essentially what you're going to have is a, basically gravel train entering the site, it's gonna swing in there, it's gonna dump the material, and then it's going to leave the site while a, while the screening operation takes place, topsoil is screened, then at some point, that same vehicle is going to come, the same truck is either gonna come back, or a different truck will come, pick it up and leave the site. This is an intermittent use, for the most part. It's going to, the frequency of use, hours per day, days per week, is gonna fluctuate with the season and opportunity availability of the topsoil materials, but on average, he's expecting about three days a week that they're gonna be screening topsoil, and on those days where he's screening topsoil, it's probably about half a day's worth of work. So it's not five to seven days a week in morning till night. The expected vehicles per day is roughly two, as far as the trucks that are entering the site and leaving the site. Likewise, for the overnight parking, about two vehicles, about two trucks, the site plan shows three trucks, semis with trailers, two, three. It's so, the idea though, however, is it's, this is fairly low intense as far as the traffic is concerned and the operations. I have actually, I can hand this out, I've got several copies of the actual machine that he plans on using at the site. The first page, the first page shows pictures of the machine, the equipment. The second page gives you some dimensional requirements of this machine. Actually, the machine itself is about eleven and a half feet to the end of the conveyor above grade, and the topsoil, the screened topsoil pile is a foot less than that, it's about ten and a half feet. This manufacturer makes several different sizes of topsoil screeners, this is the smaller end, as far as size is concerned, so it's not, you know, again, this isn't really a huge operation. The, the screening, our intent, this is indicated on the site plan, there's already a six-foot wooden fence surrounding the gravel yard area. With the extension of the gravel yard, that it was our intent to just maintain a six-foot wooden fence around the perimeter of the gravel yard area. The paving is obviously a concern, there's been some interpretation, obviously, in previous discussions, as well as what's been mentioned tonight, but I've discussed it with the property owner, and basically, what we're proposing to do is expand, the gray shaded area that's on the site pond, that area would be expanded, essentially, the northwestern quarter to a third of the site would end up being paved. So if you can imagine that shaded area being extended easterly to approximately, say, ten feet east of the catch basins that are there, and extended north to north property line, so that northwesterly quadrant of the site would be paved. The reason for that would be if the travel surfaces need to be paved, that satisfies that requirement. So you've got the vehicles, employee vehicles that are parking there, the parking for the equipment for the trucks, as well as the maneuvering. The idea with this would be that the gravel trains and the, the vehicles that enter the site to drop off the materials, they would stay on the paved surface, they'd pull up to the edge of the paved surface, or back, or swing in back and dump the material into the gravel yard area. There'd be just one single tractor loader, basically, that would move the materials into the screener, let the screening operation take place in the gravel yard area. When the topsoil is screened and it's time to haul it out, gravel train will come back, maneuver and park on the paved surface, the loader would then take the material and load it into the truck. So all of the maneuvering, all of the parking, all of the driving would occur on a paved surface. The other benefits would be for soil erosion, dust control. Obviously, a gravel surface has potential to create dust, we all know that. The majority of the dust is going to occur from your gravel trains, your vehicles that are running on the site. So if the, if the wheel vehicles are maintained on the paved surface, they're not kicking up dust. Obviously, two-thirds of the site, the remainder of the yard area is going to remain gravel, so there is still potential for dust, for dust to occur because of the loader, dry conditions, but dust can, the applicant's already aware that that's an issue, and dust control being a typical manner, either by spraying with water, or some type of a chloride spraying, it would be typical of any gravel yard, or what you see on the gravel roads for that matter. Talked about, or it was mentioned about soil erosion control. There's no immediate measures to be taken for the, the soil stockpile and the screened pile themselves, anything that you, any barrier you'd put around them would obviously be knocked over by the equipment. However, one idea that we have is this square rectangular pavement area, we could line that with the large concrete blocks, the same blocks that are used to construct the bins, you can line those right up against the pavement. It would stop any soil erosion from crossing into the paved area, as well as prevent a barrier to keep the trucks on the pavement, so it's kind of a twofold benefit. The, there is storm sewer on site, there's four to five catch basins on site, there's additional measures that could be taken. If the, the soil does enter the pavement areas, you can put in catch basin, insert filters, not the temporary ones used during construction period for development, that could be a more of a permanent nature. They pop the rim off, drop them in, put the rim back on, the rim holds them in place. When they get clogged, you yank them out, you wash them, put them back in. So it's a very simple solution, keeping the sediment out of the storm sewer. Likewise, with the, keeping the vehicles on the paved surfaces, it will eliminate the soils, again, from getting on the pavement and getting into Birchwood. And I, I actually spoke with the, as far as any type of storm sewer modifications, detention requirements, whatnot, I had the opportunity to speak with engineering, and to be honest, I didn't get a straight answer. Basically, they're going to want to know ultimately what's the extent of pavement. Depending on that extent, they'll determine whether or not detention's required. There's not a whole lot of difference in runoff going from gravel, compact gravel surface to a paved surface. I really, if we were paving the whole site, yeah, they would want detention, but it's not our intent to pave the whole site, we're paving a percentage of it. Certainly, if, once we come up with a final layout for the pavement, and they say, okay, yeah, either you're gonna detain for the, just that area, or whatever percentage it is, we're obviously going to comply, whether it's upsizing a storm sewer, putting in a little pond, whatever's, whatever engineering requires in that regard, we're going to, we're going to take care of. So that's not, that's not an issue there. And I think that's pretty much the gist of what I wanted to explain, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have one.
Yes, Mr. Hudson?
What was the use of this property before you purchased it?
It was a impound yard, I think, or towing company.
It was Coleman. Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Cratt?
Couple of quick questions. You said you, if I drew a north-south line, ten feet east of those catch basins, that's where the, you proposed that the pavement would end?
Roughly, yeah, the, the idea would be to get the, to maintain the catch basins in the paved area, so we could protect them from the soil engineers getting in.
And then to follow up, the, since that north-south line, there's no paved area where those, the, the most eastern two bins are, will trucks ever go into that area to load, it's just?
No, we would either eliminate the bins or reconfigure it, we could slide the whole, probably wouldn't take the, all six bins and slide them west because we'd lose our parking, but we could shift them, we could actually put a couple bins on the south end of that paved surface, or just simply eliminate them.
Okay, and then, well, one more I thought of. What about the, the screening around the property, the six-foot, this, this machine you said is ten feet high?
Right.
Could you provide a drawing showing what it would look like as far as angle views from adjoining properties and the street, what the view would be from those properties and from the, the total view from the street? So that, because I'm not so sure if three, a six-foot screening will adequately screen the view of that machine or not, I'm just throwing that out there. It'd be nice to see a drawing of it.
Sure.
I'm just curious, does the manufacturer, this, of the screen, give you any indication on how, how many decibels the motor would run at, and what, how loud the system would be?
No, I've, I've, those couple pages are just two pages of several from the manual, and in that manual, there was nothing that I could see with regards to decibel level, and I did not, to be honest with you, I did not reach out to the manufacturer to ask that question, so I'm not familiar with how loud the machine is, to be honest with you.
Does, does this vibrate? Is, so I've seen screens that are shakers, but is this just a, like a rotary bin that rotates?
Yeah, it's a travel screen, so it doesn't have the vibration.
I'm sorry, sir, could you, could you please come to the microphone?
Yeah, it just, it, it rolls the material on an angle. The bad stuff falls out the, the bad end and then the good.
You know how, what size motor is on that?
It's got a four-cylinder John Deere, so it'd be equivalent to a larger tractor. Not a large tractor, but a-
Do you have mufflers on it, like?
Yeah, it has a muffler, they do, will offer a muffler that will lower the decibels. Right now, it's just got a tractor muffler on it, but they do offer a muffler.
Thank you. I would just, can I ask this to the staff? Is there, I'm sure there's a limit on the amount of decibels that can be emitted from the site, is that, you recall what that would be?
I want to say it's, Alan, you may know, I can look it up, sixty-five decibels at the property line, after a certain time of night, but I'd, I'd have to verify that.
It's in the ordinance, I don't know.
It's something to shoot for, if you, once you look up the information.
Sure.
That's fine, I mean-
I'll look, I'll verify it.
Yeah. And, and the other question the staff would be, you say, in your opinion, you'll need to pave all the travel portions of the road, if, if he was proposing something different, would he have to get a variance from the zoning board?
Well, maybe. It's difficult to tell until we see a plan shown on paper, what they're actually proposing to determine if it meets the ordinance requirements or not, to be perfectly honest with you. If he, if, you know, a requirement of the ordinance is to pave, and that requires all the travel areas. Our interpretation is anywhere a vehicle can go is considered a travel area, and thus has to be paved. To get relief from that, that's not a, not a variation that the, a variance that the Planning Commission can grant, it has to go through zoning board appeals.
Right.
If they're willing to do site modifications to limit the quote-unquote "travel areas", then that might be something that we can, we can look at when they actually put it in on a plan.
Thank you.
To answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I have one other recommendation, that, I think you'll probably need some type of sediment basin to control the sediment and runoff from, from the site. And you may want to consider some type of bio, sediment basin with bioswales around the perimeter of the site in lieu of retention if, you know, you know, you're, it's true, gravel isn't much, it's about the same impervious area number as, as concrete, but it's still, you're gonna have runoff, and it's, and some, you're gonna have to manage it somehow, I would think, and I think this would be a beautiful opportunity to do some type of best management practices for stormwater, to allow infiltration and to allow the sediment to enter into a sediment basin, and then that could be easily cleaned rather than having to remove catch, catch basins and filters and things like that, if you have the equipment there. So that's a suggestion, and you may want to look into that when you do your, your stormwater design.
Mr. Schultz?
Question for staff. You say, any area that is traversed by a vehicle, I don't remember your exact terminology, but I believe it is something similar to that. Is a loader considered a vehicle?
Yes.
If it, if it is, then the entire site has to be paved?
That's right.
Okay, I just, I, because we're talking about paving where the trucks are gonna go, but not paving where the loader-
The, the ordinance states all travel area. We've interpreted travel area to be anywhere where a vehicle can travel.
Okay.
If you look at the site, I know it's much smaller, if you look at a site that was approved just to the west, that entire site is a contractor's yard, and that entire site is paved, because that whole entire site is travel area.
Mr. Cratt?
Well, okay.
Go ahead.
My, my question goes back to the, the screening machine, the, I would imagine that the diesel engine can be muffled to a point where it's acceptable, no louder than a truck on the site. My concern is the rattling noise of the rocks banging around on those metal sorter. That's what I'd like to find out from the, some kind of manufacturer specifications, if there are noises, you know, the level of noise coming from the rattling of those boulders or rocks coming through, and if so, if it does reach that, a, a level that's objectionable above the sixty-five decibel, maybe that screening around your entire property can include some kind of sound deadening material. Just a thought.
I understand it. I put some thought into that.
Okay.
I failed to ask you before, I apologize, but is this gonna be just for your own use, the topsoil, or did you anticipate having a retail operation?
Yeah, my primary business is in Clausen, where we sell retail to the public. This would not be open to the public. This is just a use for overflow from that yard. It's a smaller yard in Clausen, this was bigger, more of a storage, but no-
That answers my question, thank you.
Yep.
I have one question. What are the hours of operation? How early would you be beginning, and when would you be shutting down?
That's real flexible. I could make it anything I needed to. It's not a on-demand. We do have a, I guess, it, it's very flexible, I could do it whenever. I just need about three hours a day, four days a week.
Is there a, a sorter on-site right now?
It's stored on-site, yes.
It looked, to me, when I was there, from the outside, it looked a lot higher than ten feet?
The conveyor, when it's stored, rolls up over top of it.
Okay.
I don't have this sheet, but it gives it the, the travel height, I believe, is eleven feet, that's what the conveyor tucked back and-
So this arm that brings, brings the soil, that would be put down at, at night, it would be left up?
That's just for, if you're storing it for a long period of time or moving it, you have it like that. I, I know the height doesn't over, it can't be over thirteen-sixth, 'cause you couldn't take it on roadway. This is legal for roadway, so I think it's like eleven-sixth, if I had to guess.
Eleven-five. Mr. Savin?
Regarding noise, the requirement is sixty-five decibels at the property line, except in the IB district, which this is, you can't exceed seven, seventy, seven-zero decibels.
That's, that's anywhere on the property.
At, at the property line?
Only at the property line.
So you can exceed it interior, but measured at the property line, you can't exceed it?
This is a relatively small site, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of dissipation. Anyone else? Mr. Strat?
Yeah, I, I think I see a semi that is parked in the photograph, I tried to enlarge it, which the semis are thirteen-foot-six, max, like, so when we're talking about sightlines, I, I really, I think the semis are not that attractive either. That being said, you know, the other thing that I had concern with was the comments that I've made before. It's difficult to legislate every possible condition, and we have to understand what the intent is of the ordinance, or the zoning ordinance, or whatever. And it seems to me that when we're talking- And it seems to me that when we're talking about a vehicle, as indicated, there will be two different types of vehicles. One is stationary on the site and the other that is loaded and taken off the site. Makes sense to me that the vehicles that are coming in and out of the site should be on paved surfaces, thus minimizing the amount of dirt, dust, whatever, on the roads. The other, I can't understand why that would have to be paved. To me, it doesn't make sense. It really doesn't. We're asking the owners to actually incorporate some real expense here. And I, I can't, I can't understand why we would ask for that. But that's my opinion. And as I said, I think it's hard to legislate every possible condition.
Mr. Craig.
It's just impossible.
I just want to follow up with, Mr. Strat said, I agree. I think if the vehicles that's going to be on the site never go off the site, the loader, I don't personally see that as a, a vehicle traversing the site. I think it's more of a piece of equipment on the site. So I don't really think it as a vehicle. But that's, you know...
Mr. Chairman. Again, it would be like having a, a garbage dump and asking the garbage dump to be totally paved because there's a bulldozer that's running around, that's a vehicle. I mean, you know, how do we, where do we start? Where do we start?
Well, I, I personally have a concern against, about the trucks that are leaving the site, and I think someone else already mentioned it, but in terms of taking mud and soil out on the streets, we certainly don't want this operation to create a greater maintenance situation for the city. I know some concrete mixing places have, they also have a, a wheel wash situation. And maybe that might be an answer to some of the problems with that. That's, that's really all I have. Anyone else on the commission have any concerns? This is a public hearing. Will, anyone else in the audience have, want to comment on this? Yes, ma'am, would you come forward, please? Did you sign in too? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Casali. I'm an engineer with Collision Protection Sciences, and we are located, the building directly east of the property. Oh. May I ask you?
You're going to guarantee this is virus-free, right?
Yes. Maybe we'll start with the photos to let you, to show you what the view is outside of my window and what's currently going on today. And then I'll start with my comments. There's only about five photos. Our business is an engineering consulting firm. And the owners of the property spent two years, we, we currently resided in downtown Rochester, and they spent two years looking for the appropriate location, which offered office space plus a garage for use. And back in January of 2013, found this prime location and a beautiful building, as you'll see. So that's 1-893 Birchwood, directly east of the applicant. And we thought it'd be a great opportunity, a great location in this, in this IB district.
That's one, is that what I want to show?
Yep, if you can leave it there for one. If you see on the, the second picture down, the row of windows there are directly adjacent to these, this property. My window is the third window, and I sit and look directly and watch the machines all summer long. I've watched that go on. Okay, if you go to the next photo, that is one end. That would be the south end of the property. And, and the fence, the fence line, of course, is in the current position. I don't know how many feet away that is from our building, but they're proposing to move that fence line within twenty feet of our property. And all summer, the machines would be bringing those rocks and storing the boulders, and I don't know what, clearing the land there right outside my window. If you could scroll to the next picture. That is the, the trommel that is, the reason it appears so high to somebody is because it's sitting on a flatbed. And I, I can't recall during the summer if, because where I sit, I'm a little lower, obviously. Some of these photos are from our roof. I can't recall if the operation took place while the trommel was on the flatbed or while it was on the ground. Okay, and then you can also see the stockpile of soil where it's located. Okay, next picture. Um, that is, I think, directly outside my window. Is that today's picture outside my window? Yep, yep. And I think that might be all I have for photos. Oh, one more. So that's what's currently going on. Now, when we, when the owners of the company purchased this building, it was the IB district. It fit with what our business is and what we wanted. At that time, Coleman's Wrecker Service owned the property, and they stored vehicles, mostly cars. And they didn't disturb us. I couldn't see over the fence. I didn't even know they were there. In fact, I did, nothing bothered me until the summer when the, the owners changed. And then in came the gravel trucks, one and two trailers, the portable machinery for screening the topsoil, the stockpiles, the large rocks and boulders being moved. Most importantly, the noise. I know we're asking for the decibel levels of the machinery, but I can tell you, it's loud. And what I do, I sit in front of that window with two computer screens, and I analyze data, casework. And I need to concentrate and summarize, and it's very distracting to myself and my coworkers to hear that all day long. If we fast-forward to, to this applicant, Mr. Robinson's letter, the engineer for the applicant, it's, it says he purchased the property in 2013 with the intent to use the yard for landscape material storage and topsoil screening operation. Well, when he purchased the property, it was zoned IB. Isn't the first thing you do when you're looking for property to see how it's zoned and the proper usage? You don't move in and then assume you can haul your equipment in and do this in a backwards The normal procedure, I think, is to come in front of the planning commission, tell them what you're planning to do, get approval for the site, and then purchase the land. I mean, it's unfortunate that it was done in this, this order, but that's not, that's not really our problem at Collision Protection Sciences. Next, in Mr. Robinson's letter, he says the gravel yard is proposed to be expanded eastward to within twenty foot, twenty-one feet east of the properly lot, property line, which is right outside my window. So I guess if this was to be approved, we would ask for maybe some double screening along that area. Put up a ten-foot fence, eight-foot, ten-foot, and on my side, build up a berm, maybe a three-foot berm, and add the spruce trees there that are already existing in the front to provide better screening for us. Next, in Mr. Robinson's letter, he says, "We opine that all conditions of ordinance section 6.8 are met and that the proposed special land use request is compatible with the IB zoning district." Well, ordinance 6.08 is a contractor's yard for outdoor storage. It's not a yard for topsoil screening. It's just not appropriate. Well, for these reasons, we ask that you take into consideration all that you've heard and seen, and do not approve this special land use and preliminary site plan based on these facts. The applicant purchased the land without taking into consideration the current zoning of the property and its allowable use. The applicant has been operating his business inappropriately since they moved to Birchwood Drive. The soil screening, sorting, and moving process is not in accordance with section 6.08 contractor's yard outdoor storage facility. Most importantly, it is a nuisance to the surrounding businesses. It doesn't fit in with the surrounding businesses. I think we would be mostly affected, maybe that's why we're here, but I can assure you it doesn't fit in with the surrounding area. Lastly, if this is approved, who is going to, and if the applicant, applicant goes away and comes back with satisfying all the conditions that, that you are asking for, who is going to monitor this, besides me outside my window? So I really don't have any faith in, in that, that, that they're going to adhere. Oh, the other thing is, I'm sorry, I'm going to backtrack, but they're proposing to, if you allow it, to put the top screening operation in the northeast corner, which is right outside my window. And that's going to go on all day long. If you're going to allow it, ask them to move that to the other side, where it's next to United Contractors. Okay, he's right, all that operation is going to go right outside our windows where we're trying to work all day long. And we have a beautiful white building. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Canelli?
Thank you for your time.
I do have one question.
Okay.
Did the applicant ever contact you personally?
Not that I know of.
Or did you ever talk to the applicant?
No.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, oh.
If there are no further comments, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the table for discussion.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes, Mr. Hudson.
I think it's premature to approve or disapprove a special use tonight. I think we need more answers than something submitted, but I am impressed that perhaps the problem of the site can be fixed with some extensive merming and shrubbery and landscaping to, to shield that, and perhaps even moving the operation. Yet it sounded a lot, but I'd like to see, I think, the results at some further meeting before we make any decision.
Mr. Schultz. I agree with Mr. Hudson. I think we need to, before we can take any action, we need to see a site plan and special use request that includes what, in fact, the required paving is, the noise levels that will be generated, how retention and/or runoff is going to be handled, and acceptable screening. And I would ask that in that process, the petitioner also take into account the public comment that has been made this evening. I am not prepared, prepared to vote yea or nay on this item this evening.
I think even the planning consultant's report indicated that he, they weren't recommending Anyone else? Okay, so this is a take no action then? Or do we need to be more specific with the resolution?
Because it's a public hearing, we may want to postpone the item to a date certain.
Okay.
Or an action to, to a date certain so that anyone who's in the audience here will know when the public hearing is. I mean, I don't want to speak for Alan here, but...
Right. Does Mr. Robinson have a suggested time that you'd be coming back, that we might schedule a public hearing?
I may answer the question first. You'd probably need plans two weeks before scheduled meeting. It's probably short to get it on the, the next meeting in March, so probably the first meeting in April.
That'd be sufficient? Okay.
And if I could, the petitioner would like to speak?
Sure.
In response to the public comments?
The comments of my neighbor stating that the use that I, I'm using the business as now is for the trucks parking. The previous owner of that property ran a wrecker service. Their trucks actually towed my trucks. So they had huge trucks, just like my trucks. And it was outside storage. As far as the demographic scenario, there's a contractor's yard down the road, there's one next door. I don't think that I'd be disrupting the perception of the property by doing what I was doing. Just wanted to make that clear, that it was used, big trucks did park there. And just wanted that to be known.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
I just have one follow-up question, too, for the staff. The operation as we understand it now, it is, is that part of, is that compatible with the, the IB district?
The proposed use of facilities, a contractor's yard?
Yes.
It's a, it's a special use, provided that they meet the special use standards.
And the planning commission can set conditions for the special use?
Conditions, they can set conditions, and they have to be related to the special use standards and mitigation on adjacent properties. They'd be reasonable, is basically the threshold.
If the planning commission were to determine that the use of the soil sorter was not compatible with this area for various reasons, specific reasons, like the size of the lot, that type of thing, and neighboring properties, could that be part of a special condition?
Yes, the planning commission can make such condition as that, that certain operations, such as a soil sorter, would not be permitted, but the use of the facility for vehicle stor, you know, contractor storage, vehicles, material bins, you know, material storage, that would be permissible. Yes, you can limit the operations of the, of what the special use allows. In addition, you could put additional conditions, such as the applicant's proposing a six-foot high fence, you can require it to be eight-foot high. You can, you can require additional screening. You can require additional landscaping buffers, etc. You can put conditions as long as they're related to protection of, protection of, within the police powers of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a quick thought. The hours of operation. Now, we've got a tenant or a business to the east of this one, this storage facility with the sorter that has probably, I'd have to ask the business, but I would imagine it would be more of an eight in the morning till maybe six at night, evening office work, the engineering company. What kind of flexibility we have as far as requiring the noise of this machine sorting soil? And mainly, my, my concern is the, the rocks bouncing around a metal tube. If that could be done after this engineering company leaves for the day? Because if I, you know, truthfully, if I was sitting there doing my engineering work and I heard a bang, 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 and then all of a sudden, a whole bunch of, that may, my focus on my job, I, I know, would be distracted. And just, just a thought. Yes.
It can be, that can be a condition. It would, it would probably be very difficult for the city to enforce that condition, to make sure they're only doing it after six o'clock in the evening, etc. But also, I want to know if the applicant's not proposing any, any lighting of the site. So any operations after six o'clock would be difficult due to, due to lack of sunlight.
Yeah, but, but I would think most of their business would be done during summer and spring and fall hours. So in the winter, you're absolutely right. It would be, they'd have to have lighting.
I would just like, make a suggestion that you approach your neighbors, talk to them, and see if you can come up with an agreeable solution before you come back to see us. This has worked in the past with other, other projects, and I think it would be in your benefit and in theirs to see if you could, you know, come to common ground.
Mr. Gottlieb.
Is there any place we can go view one of these machines in operation? Is anybody aware that we could have an empirical test and say, oh, yeah, you know, we've looked at it, we heard it? Does it exist anywhere?
Do you have one on-site right now?
I have it at site.
Like, running? Is it?
Yeah. It's that sorter.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schultz.
I would resolve to postpone this item until the regular meeting in April, or as, at such time as the petitioner comes back with a revised site plan.
Support?
Mr. Gottlieb.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Strat.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Gottlieb.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Krant.
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika.
April 8th. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is item number six, public hearing, special use and preliminary site plan review, SU 4112, proposed advanced landscape and builder's, no, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one, excuse me. It's item number seven, conditional rezoning application, number CR 011. Proposed Amber Town Center Town Homes and Lofts, west side of Livernoy, north of Town Center, 3409 Livernoy, section 21, from O Office District to BB, Big Beaver District. You, Mr. Carla?
I can do this.
Okay.
January 27th, 2014, City Council considered a rezoning application for the subject property. It's located, here's, it's located at the corner of Town Center and Livernoy, and it's zone, presently zoned O Office. And the applicant sought a rezoning from the underlying O Office District to the BB, Big Beaver District, and on the 27th of January, City Council denied the rezoning application. It was a traditional rezoning application, it was not a conditional rezoning application. Now, concurrent to City considering the rezoning application, the applicant did submit a site plan application to kind of demonstrate good faith that they wanted to move forward with the, with the site plan. It was for a 61-foot-tall Amber Town Center Town Homes and Lofts. But again, City Council denied it. The applicant has come back with a conditional rezoning application for a 51-foot-tall building. They've eliminated one story, it's 10 feet lower. The site plan application is in your packet, and the applicant has provided a kind of a summary, that's in the cover memo, laying out the conditions that they're proposing, and I can go over those conditions. The report that is in the packet is the same report that we, that was prepared and presented for the traditional rezoning. We haven't modified it for a couple of reasons. One, we were, we were short on time, Mr. Carla was on vacation, and we just got it, but we could go Friday. But two, really, there's not that much, I know, he takes vacation once in a while, it's amazing.
Isn't he a consultant?
Yeah, I know. I, it didn't...
Actually, he works on vacation, too.
He didn't get approval from me, I don't know what's going on. But, but, but seriously, really, the only, the only change has been that it's a conditional rezoning now tied to a site plan, and the building's actually lower in profile, and I can't imagine our recommendation's gonna change. So I'm not gonna present the, the report that we've all gone over numerous times. But just to summarize, the, this kind of summarizes the project, and this was provided to us from Mr. Amber. The building was lowered, and an additional floor was removed. Amber Town Center Town Homes and Lofts is now a four-story building. Building height is now under 51 feet, and the submitted drawings now show a roof height of 49 feet 8 inches for the sloped roof. The building is about 10 foot lower than the previously proposed five-story building. The 10-foot build-to-lines are as before on the east and south. The rear property line setback is 54 feet, and the west property line setback is 96 feet. The green belt on the north property line has been widened from 11 feet to 13 feet, and the north driveway is now 24 feet wide. A row of parking has been removed on the west, and more green belt screening provided on the west and south. There are now 92 parking spaces plus two barrier-free spaces for this 46-unit building. I should note that the previous rendition was 60 feet, well, 60 units, excuse me, so they've removed 14 units. There is one required ADA unit on the first floor. Because there are now fewer units and parking spaces, population and traffic will be reduced. By lowering building height, site lines have been improved, and there are fewer balconies, more privacy is provided to the north. Revised elevation has now provided greater percentage of brick, the north elevation in particular. Building lot coverage is 31.99 percent, which is less than the typical 35 percent for multiple family residential developments. Open space is 18.84 percent, which is more than the required 15 percent. And finally, the topographic survey shows a minimum building-to-building distance of more than 345 feet to the nearest residential house in Westwood Park. Again, this was provided by the applicant. This is not a public hearing, the public hearing's scheduled for March 25th. This is an opportunity to hear what the applicant has to say, to discuss this, the site plan, to provide ideas, feedback to the applicant. I would note that since you've got the, since the application was submitted, the applicant provided some color renderings. They're in your packet here, and I'll put them up on the screen, and I can answer any questions that you have. And the applicant is also here to answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Savinat? I do have one. Could you explain for, for the viewers, as well as the, the public, what the advantage is of a conditional rezoning over just a traditional rezoning?
There's a couple advantages. It essentially combines the rezoning with, with site plan approval. It's rolled into one, and it also, there's also protection for, for not only the, the city and the applicant, but for the surrounding residents, because the applicant, the, the site plan and the conditions that are proposed by the applicant are tied to the rezoning. So everyone knows, when the approval is granted for the conditional rezoning, that what is approved is, is on the site plan. If you recall, those of you who watched the City Council meeting where they considered the rezoning application, and there was also some comments made at Planning Commission, the Planning Commission and the City Council said, you know, we, we believe that the applicant wants to do a 61-story building, but 61-foot-high building, excuse me, but things happen, things happen. And there's no guarantees that, that it's rezoned just to BB, Big Beaver, and the parcel changes hands, or whatever, things happen, and maybe there won't be a five-story 61, 61-foot-high building, or maybe it would be an office, or a restaurant, or a bar, or what have you. With a conditional rezoning, the conditions in the site plan are volunteered by the applicant, and, and the rezoning is tied to that site plan. And any modification, significant modifications to that site plan and to that conditional rezoning have to go back through the process, back to Planning Commission for a public hearing, back to City Council for a public hearing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schultz?
Brent, on most residential developments, the building height is, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I have been before, is normally halfway to the ridge, is that not correct?
For a sloped roof.
For a sloped roof. Well, these buildings have sloped roofs, so would not the official height of the building be half the distance of the sloped roof? Instead of the 51 feet that, I mean, it appears that if you take a tape measure, it's going to be 49 feet 11 and 1/2 inches or something.
Yeah, there's, there's actually, the building height is halfway up the sloped roof, you're correct, and then there's, what is it?
Ridge.
The ridge, which is like the apex, but the actual height is halfway point of the sloped roof.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, is the applicant present, please?
Justin Weber and I are going to try our best to present tonight. Dennis Cowan, our attorney, was unable to attend. He sends his regards. We have met with the Planning Commission twice before. I'm Jerry Amber from Amber Properties Company. We have operated businesses in Troy, the apartment business, since 1967 in Troy, and we look forward to working with the city in this, this particular development. We appreciate the kind words and past support. We've listened to what we have heard from both you folks, as well as the members of As previously stated, we think this is a terrific site for this development. We think the master plan's correct on this point to encourage more residential housing in this area. This is market-driven. Our tenants, who we rent to, tell us they want to live in Troy, and we have no new construction in Troy, as I mentioned to you before at the earlier meetings. We have over 1,200 units and no new developments in Troy. We do have about 180-some units in Troy, but we'd like that to change. This revised development with Justin, we'll, we'll get into some of the specifics and answer that particular question that you asked about roof height, which we are able to answer. We're trying to respond to the market. We heard the criticisms at the earlier meetings. We have been encouraged to return with the conditional rezoning request that we have presented, and we want to be and hope we will be a good neighbor, both at this site and the community of Troy at large. Perhaps, in hindsight, it would have been wise to have gone the conditional rezoning approach. We didn't do that. We're hoping to make amends with the presentation tonight. So Justin has renderings, and they've been discussed briefly. We are able to answer your, your questions. We appreciate the past support of the Planning Commission, and we hope to continue in that vein with the revised development that we're going to talk about tonight. Justin, could you take it from here?
Good evening. Thank you for having us back here again. I will answer the question on the, on the roof height, but I just wanna go through where we've gone through this project. The biggest challenge has been answering neighborhood concerns. So with that, we've eliminated a floor of this building. That's, that's a big task to do, and starting with a 60s unit building, and then taking it to a 46. We are down at 51 feet to the top. The answer on the roof height, I could have put 49.8. By your zoning code, the center of this building has a parapet wall, the top of the parapet wall is at 151, and that is why it's 151. And just, just for clarification on that. We have lowered the building heights, this has improved the sight lines. The fourth floor units originally had hung balconies, these have been omitted, and this has reduced the amount of balconies throughout the building. On the north elevation, Mr. Savinat, can we have the rear elevate, our rear rendering?
North is the middle one.
If you, if you proceed to the renderings.
The renderings, I'm sorry. The color renderings?
Yes, please.
Yes.
This is the rear elevation. We have increased the, the brick amount. This is playing with the palette of the neighborhood. The indented unit now, the brick is proceeding all the way up to the, the parapet wall, and then the brick is proceeding to the window of the fourth floor. On the site, because we have 46 units, we've reduced the parking count. We've increased the green belt on the north side, it's from 11 to 13. We've also increased the green belt along Town Center. It softens the view from the public to the parking area. One of the questions that may arise is why the two driveways? This is for ease of travel on the site. There is the eastmost driveway, this is a direct access for the refuse trucks, it allows for easy access on and off our site without navigating through the other properties. Our lot coverage, as stated, is 31.99, this is less than the standard 35 on a multi-family. We have maintained the requested 10-foot build-to-lines on Town Center and Livernoy. The rear setback is 54 feet, the west is 96. And we are over a football field away from the residential district. We do feel that Amber Town Center enhances the neighborhood, we feel it increases the pedestrian traffic. Mr. Savinat, if we could have the next rendering? This is the front elevation on Town Center. We have answered the request for additional glazing, two-story entry spaces on the town house, or town homes on Town Center. We have also provided bicycle parking, and leave our position to the, to the community center, will provide a more walkable neighborhood. Is there any questions I might be able to answer?
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Krantz?
Just want clarification on that roof height. The, the 51-foot is in that center, flat roof, and what is the average of the sloped roofs?
The average of the slope is 49.8.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Yeah, Mr. Schultz?
Just to clarify for me, you said you increased the green belt on the front of the building, you're saying the front of the building is Livernoy?
We increased the green belt to the north.
By the parking, as I recall. Brent, could you put the, the site plan back up?
From the original plan, there was parking, if we can move the hand down to the front entries?
Right there.
There's a green belt added between the two parking spots and the property line.
Okay.
It's approximately five feet wide.
Yes, Mr. Krantz? Just a comment for the petitioners. Knowing and listening to the council meeting and the neighbors, maybe it would be smart for you to provide some kind of drawing to show how the neighbors would see this building from their homes. I think it might be helpful in dispelling a lot of guessing.
We do have line of sight for that purpose. Does the Planning Commission wish to see those drawings? Or, we have them? We anticipated that question.
Good.
It's definitely gonna come up at the public hearing, so...
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're ready.
Good.
We did it two ways, while Justin is, is presenting it, we did it from the building looking north, and from the homes looking south. So we're doing it in the two directions that tell the story, we think.
Excellent, because that's...
And the lines of sight, you'll see, are, are quite good.
Yeah.
Lowering the building 10 feet and removing a, a floor of the building has addressed that.
I'm glad you addressed their, their concerns, because there was, there was two concerns. One, I've gotta look at this thing, and the other thing was, they're gonna spy on my little daughter through the bedroom window or something.
And it's not possible, as the drawings show.
I think the...
Brent, can we get an easel for them? They just put some...
We have an easel. That question might be asked.
That's a second. which I thought was creative?
Please do.
So we were looking at, when you're standing on the terrace of the first building, you have balconies and terraces, there's a section on the side, you're drawing, there's a line of sight, as they become from the, looking out, as you can see, the medical office buildings interrupted most of the site, in the plan view.
Excuse me? Could you move back a little bit so I can see it? I'm not, I'm in a peanut gallery, but that's okay.
The same as what has been passed out, Mr. Stratt, too?
Yeah. So on the...
Yeah, I have a copy, thank you.
On the edge of the section, it's, it's the resident standing on the balcony and the terrace, a line of sight cone drawn from them, looking out from the lower balconies, it's interrupted by the medical building. The trees and screening has interrupted the vision as it goes across. If you're looking also from the building, the building screen, all views towards those houses. On the residential board, on the far board, again, trees, building screen, views towards the building.
Great idea.
These are the, these are the...
And there was mention at earlier meetings, all the people, any colors of people that are present, they're not visible from the building.
We feel the medical office buildings would block view from the...
We feel the medical office buildings would block view from the tenants.
And the rolls of trees that are existing, as shown on the topographic survey, block the view.
Any further questions?
No, I just want to thank you, it's nicely done, I appreciate you doing this.
Well, as there are other questions or concerns, we'll see you at the March 25th public hearing.
You will.
Thank you. This is not a public hearing, but is there anyone else in the audience who wants to comment on this item? If not, we'll move on to item eight, which is public animus for items on the current agendas, it looks like there are none, and finally, number nine, Planning Commission comments. I think we'll start at this, Mr. Bowden? Mr. Stratt? Mr. Gottlieb? Mr. Shepke?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still a little concerned on this, where, where there's screening soil and that over there. Noise levels always depend upon what you're screening, if there, if you're screening, if you're screening clay from soil, topsoil, if you're screening, if you're screening rock from topsoil, like was brought up here, it can, it can be very noisy, and end loaders are very noisy. So I, I still have some concerns, and I'm waiting to, to hear more on that to make up my mind. I want to notify the board, I'm going in for a knee replacement next week, so I might, I might be off for, I might miss a meeting, or, so, I want to just notify you ahead of time, Mr. Chairman, that, that I'll have that knee replacement, that full knee replacement next week.
That's our next meeting?
Uh, no, next Tuesday, but it's going to be, I'm going to be down for a couple weeks at least, maybe, maybe much more, we don't know. You know, I've never gone through, when you get old, what doesn't hurt doesn't work anymore, so, you just don't know what's going to happen.
We encourage you to be here, this is a handicap facility, so.
Well, I'll tell you what, it gets more, that stuff gets more and more important as you, as you start going down the road. But anyway, I'd like to thank everybody, and, and, but anyway, I have real concerns about screening, parking, I have no concerns about vehicles screening, and some of these other things that can cause a problem.
Mr. Gottlieb.
If I could back up just a second, you, you mentioned comments, I, I went to the website for McCluskey, and their website depicts that equipment in several different environments, many with substantial barriers and walls, and it looks like noise buffering. So, it's worth noting that the manufacturer has, has taken steps to demonstrate that it can be inspected.
Thank you.
Nothing for me.
Brent? Mr. Schultz. Mr. Tagle. Yes, I'd like to know, is there anything to report about the Walsh project? Have they been in front of ZBA? I don't want to steal your thunder, Tom, for next meeting, but I'm just curious.
They're, they've been in front of the ZBA, and they, they received the variances that they sought. They'll be in front of the Planning Commission on the 25th of March.
Thank you. Mr. Senzic.
I just want to back up. Usually, we, I report on our fourth meeting of the month, and since it wasn't on the agenda for me to bring my report, I didn't, but I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding that.
Well, I know that you're making several suggestions to the Planning Commission, and I don't think that's coming up at this next month's report.
That, unfortunately, because we have nothing on the, it's going to be reviewed first by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and since we do not have a meeting this month, it'll take a little bit longer before you get that list.
If it's not too much trouble, I, I would just suggest you may want to copy the Planning Commission on, on what you're going to suggest to them.
What I said, we'll, we'll, we'll work, it'll, it'll just come on the fullest of time, we'll, it'll come before this commission, probably in a couple of months.
Mr. Senzic.
I had a couple of questions. One, I was just interested if the bylaws are changed regarding the roll call vote for the, for the agenda and for the-
Oh, yeah. No, no, because you just reminded me that I got to bring those back, and we'll do it the 25th.
Good.
At a study meeting. Thanks for the, thanks for the reminder.
You're welcome, I'm glad to be here.
Yeah.
And the second, I wonder if you could get a little update on the transit, where that's at?
Looking in your general direction, Mr. Monstee.
Well, to rehash things a little bit, as everyone is aware, the Court of Appeals ultimately ruled the city did not own the property, and the appeal to the Supreme Court of Michigan was denied. So, what the city had to do was file a condemnation action to acquire the property, and an outside law firm is handling the condemnation, and in any condemnation case, the usual process is, is a two-part process. First, there's a determination of whether there's a necessity for the city to acquire the property, and if that's not contested, then early on in the lawsuit, the city would acquire ownership, and most condemnation cases, that's the case, and then most of the case is just discussing the value that the city would have to pay. But in this case, Grand Saco actually filed a motion challenging the initial jurisdiction, claiming that some of the procedural requirements that had to take place with regard to the appraisal and making a good faith offer were not complied with. The city's attorney argued that they were complied with, but Judge Bowman of the Circuit Court disagreed with the city and dismissed the case. One option is to appeal that dismissal, but the more, I believe the more expedient option, and then, again, it's an outside firm handling it, is just to comply with the procedural requirements of the court that we did not comply with, and then re-initiate the lawsuit. I don't know what the status of that is at this point.
I have just one follow-up question, because that was going to be my question, anyway, but I, I understand now that, that the, so we're getting a new appraisal.
That's my understanding correct.
And, is that correct? And then the second, does the appraisal now will include all the improvements that the city has made to that property already, or not?
Well, that's an interesting issue that probably the appraiser's going to have to consider when doing the appraisal, because yes, that is an issue that must be discussed, is, is the value of the property, and also the date of the evaluation, whether it's valued with or without the improvements, whether you, the value has actually decreased because you had to remove the improvements.
Right.
And those sort of things, and those are all appraisal issues that will have to be decided.
Do you have any idea of the, the timeline?
Like I said, if, if, I don't have the timeline, but if the issue of necessity's not contested, the city could actually acquire ownership, hopefully, once the lawsuit is filed. But, but sometimes necessity is also challenged when there's a necessity hearing.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, I think we're adjourned.